District One J is now in order. My apologies for being late. Before we begin, I would like to provide some information regarding interpretation services. Please remember to speak clearly and at a moderate pace. Please do not speak over one another so that interpreters can accurately convey your message. Thank you for your cooperation. First agenda item is a presentation, as we often have, from our committees and departments. And Francesca, usually in that direction, there we go. She's here to discuss the Educational Equity Advisory Committee update.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all on this nice, warm day. Today, we're here to present to you our Educational Equity Advisory Committee. I'll take us down memory road in just a second, but I just really want to offer this heartfelt thank you to those committee members that have come in today. They're true leaders of servant leadership in our district and believe in collaboration in order for us to change the status quo of what's always been done. I think when we think about collaboration and what needs to be done, true collaboration is about us taking a step back, breathing, and then listening to what our community is saying so that together we can move forward with those actionable steps in order to make our district a better place. We know it's a great place, but we always have room to be better. And so they're going to be telling us today about our journey the last two years. And I want us all to listen with our intention of our heart to hear where their lived experiences have brought them to for today in their presentation. And then as volunteers and servant leaders in our district, thank you so much for always thinking of our students, supporting them first and foremost at the front of what we're doing, followed by our families and our community members so that we together can move forward. So if we go to the next slide, you did get it out. I also do have two of our members, current members of part of OSP that work on our equity work, and they'll introduce themselves when they get here. But our agenda today is we're going to learn a little bit about the Educational Equity Advisory Committee. Our focus areas for recommendations, this is two works in the, two years in the work of making every one of these four humans have been on the board for, with the exception of Bill. William has only been on it for one year, but our other three ladies have been on it for two years. The role of the Educational Equity Advisory, and I'm going to allow for some time for questions and answers. As a reminder, our EEAC members this year are currently made up of 10 family or caregivers, five student members, two of them had hoped to be here today, but had, as most teenagers do, other things that became apparent in their life. So others stepped up. We also have three community members, two staff classified members who serve on this committee, two admin staff members who serve on this committee, and one licensed, making us a very well-balanced committee that serves our students of diverse populations. There are also four people who act as district support, and Jessica, Jennifer, and then myself, and then Stephanie Moreno, who is our admin assistant, helps with moving our equity work.
This is how we open each of our meetings this year, and it's just explained about EEAC from 2020. So the membership summary, in accordance with SB 732, HSC is forming an Equity Advisory Committee to make recommendations to the district superintendent and school board related to equity and corresponding practice. The committee will be composed of community members representing the following group with efforts to ensure that the diversity of identities and experiences in the community is reflected, and that's from the Oregon State Legislature. The roles and responsibilities of the members and their duties. Advising the school district board about the education policy decisions. Advising the school district superintendent about the educational equity impacts of policy decisions. And informing the school district board and school district superintendent when a situation arises in a school of the district that negatively impacts underrepresented students, and advising the board and superintendent on how to best to handle that situation.
Hello, I'm Shiro Karaman. I'm the Equity Engagement Engagement in Tulsa. So we started this in 2022. In that year of 2022, 2023, the committee reviewed a lot of various data points of HSC to better understand the dynamics of our students and communities. So we met monthly, and we had every month invited guest speakers. You'll see highlighted, where it says Mike Scott, Travis Reiman, Adria, and so on. Those are people that came in as guest speakers to just talk about their role in HSC, and also people like Gina and Becky and Olen Arsema, also to just have conversations around data. And then we put the focus topics at the bottom. And we did that every month, like we said. There's lots of great celebrations that came out of that year. We really built a lot of relationships and community. We really left, ended the year with a good understanding of our demographics of the district, understanding the various departments and their goals to HSC forward. And so a lot of data. And then this year, the committee reviewed various data points, or went from the data points to just better understanding the dynamics of our students and community, like what are coming up in schools and in our district. But we kept the same structure, meeting monthly, having a focus area, and inviting guest speakers to come and share a little bit about the work that's happening. It's just good time again to have good discussions. And then some celebrations, again, we were able to onboard some new members, build relationships and community, understand the new district strategic plan. We did a lot into that too, as well as the goals, and understanding and creating the recommendations based on the information that we gathered the last two years, which were going forward.
And so we're going to focus on three focus areas for the recommendations. And this was based on our teams, our whole group got into three different teams in order to help solidify three common interests for recommendations. And so the three groups are inclusive and supportive learning environment, equity and education and opportunities, and enhancing communication and engagement. Those are the three areas that they really wanted to focus in on. And so we have members from each of those three groups that are speaking for their team. Each group is going to go for five minutes, so I'll be giving them, because we want to afford and allow time at the end for all of us to answer any questions or ask any questions.
So I was on the task group, is that what we call them? Hi, I'm Shiro Longstrand. I am a parent in HSC. I have one, will be two next year, starting next year, I'll have two in the district. I was on the inclusive and supportive learning environment task group. This category encompasses initiatives aimed at creating safe, inclusive, and supportive educational settings for all students, particularly those for marginalized or underrepresented So our recommendation is to implement a multifaceted approach that actively supports, empowers, and expects all staff members, including volunteers and committee members, to disrupt bias and hate speech. All staff are expected to challenge and disrupt any form of bias or hate speech with assurance of strong backing from district policies, the board, and the superintendent. Embrace equity-centered teams that will regularly conduct environmental audits across all sites to ensure students have access to safe and supportive spaces, seeing themselves in curriculum and club activities. Continue to provide staff with tools and strategies to support a wide range of learning needs, including those of language learners, neurodiverse students, and students experiencing mental health challenges. We wanted to like have a little caveat too at the bottom, which was all recommendations and interventions will be informed by the lived experiences of impacted groups, such as those defined by racial background, gender, or sexual orientation, neurodiversity, different abilities, and language proficiency.
One thing we talked about in all of our time together while we were making these recommendations is that many of these things we already do have in place, but what the team, and I don't know if I'm a stickster, wanted it to be said out loud and in front of the superintendent and the school board, that these are intentions that we are helping everybody, these recommendations that everybody is abiding by, be based on the lived experience of the students that they have in their household or that they experience. Their lived experience doesn't always say that those three bullets are happening under the larger umbrella.
Yeah, and we just wanted it to be a very clear statement from the board, from our policy, from everyone up trickle down, that no matter our own personal beliefs, that we want Hillsborough School District to be a place where every student belongs. So it doesn't matter, you know, what they look like or who they love, they feel like they have a place at HSC, they see themselves in the curriculum, they are welcomed in all the schools, and we just want that like resounding.
My name is William Johnson. Excuse me. I've been with the district for nine and a half years. Currently, I'm employed at Glencoe High School as the SBA. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you about our critical recommendations put forth for EEAC for the year 2024. These recommendations are designed to address the pressing issues of equality and inclusivity within our educational system, ensuring that every student, regardless of their background, has access to the resources, support they need to succeed. Our primary focus has been on ensuring equitable access to educational resources, opportunities, and support for all students, with particular emphasis on addressing the disparities faced by students of color and the underrepresented or the underserved groups. We have identified several key areas that require immediate action. One, bias training. Implementing comprehensive bias training programs for all staff members to create a more inclusive and understanding school environment. Addressing the absentee policy, developing a strategy to reduce absenteeism among students, particularly those from the marginal communities. Discipline practice, reviewing and reforming discipline practice to ensure they are fair and equitable, especially for the students of color. Intentional outreach, create target outreach programs to close the gap in opportunities available to the underrepresented students. Representation, increase the representation of the diverse staff members to reflect the student population more accurately. EEAC supports all courses, ensuring that English learner supports are integrated into all courses to help students navigate their academic journey effectively, and then student resources. Provide students with comprehensive resources and tools to emphasize their peer support and mentorship. We also proposed the establishment of student-focused task force to facilitate peer interactions and foster a supportive community. By expanding and exploring more mentorship programs where experienced students serve as mentors and facilitators, we can create a stronger, more supportive educational environment. In the area of enhancing communication and engagement, our recommendation focuses on improving communication channels and engagement practices between students, staff, family, and the community. This may involve refining IEPs, organizing student-led forums, and conducting intentional data digs to address students' experience gaps. Effective communication is key, and we aim to establish a clear communication access point. Offer diverse communication methods for students and families, and leverage the PACT Parents' Advisory Council for better community partnership. Additionally, we recommend real-world connections by incorporating representations, representatives, excuse me, and career, providing internships and class options related to communication, and evaluating outcomes to measure the effectiveness. By implementing these recommendations, we believe we can make significant strides towards creating a more equitable and supportive educational environment for all students in Hillsborough. I want to thank you for your time to allow me to speak.
Go ahead, Vanessa. Hi, my name is Zarmina Han. I was with the Equity Advisory Committee as a community member, and my part in the three-part recommendation covers enhancing communication and engagement. So what we're looking at is the first part was the environment, the second part was the curriculum and the careers and the path, and the third part is the communication, which kind of like weaves it all in one. So this category involves improving communication channels and engagement practices between students, staff, families, and the community to foster better understanding, support, and collaboration. And how we are intending or recommending that this be achieved is to expand, or I can say co-create, an effective equity communication strategy. Now, we wanted to insert a phrase here that was emotionally intelligent equity communication strategy centered on the following communication access points, that are students to staff, intentional community partnerships, student-led forums, leveraging PACs, and school to community. This strategy should be implemented with a predefined evaluation plan that measures its efficiency periodically through various evaluation methods, for example, focus groups, interviews and surveys, et cetera. And the implementation can be done through student equity committee in each respective high school or middle school, through CCP or opportunity speakers, and through equity-based panels. Do I have a few minutes to go ahead? So I will take a step back from the written material to bring in some personal perspective or observation of why emotionally intelligent equity communication strategy might help, because there's a lot of work out there. From the past five years, there's been increasing work that talks about emotional intelligence as a precursor to equity, because the emotional intelligence piece talks about the inner work. It addresses the biases that everybody comes in as a human being with. And until, and unless we do something about the inner work, keep all these external resources around us, but we might not be able to achieve what we're really trying to achieve. So what is emotional intelligence? It is talking about self-awareness. It is talking about self-regulation. It is talking about empathy, and empathy cannot take place unless people are aware of themselves and are able to regulate themselves. So instead of us waiting to give these kids, go to high school, and then go to college, and then go to their work organizations where they will finally meet emotional intelligence work under the umbrella of DEI, why not bring it down to school levels and take some small steps to work on it here that can help us foster equity and inclusion at these developmental stages? And there were two experiences that I wanted to share with the board, was how I see it impacting. Is once I was in my neighborhood park, and there was this little child who I often saw in the park, and she could not speak English. I believe she spoke Spanish, and I don't speak Spanish, so I never understood what she would be saying, and she would usually be alone, and she's a small child. So once she was in the park and she was crying, and I was there, and there was this other mother also there. And first I look around to see if there's an adult that is with her, and I couldn't find an adult, so I went and I tried to make communication, to ask if she was okay, to ask where she lived, if I could walk her home, stuff like that. And I was also observing this other mother who couldn't care less that there's a child crying, and it made me wonder, why is it that I'm going and this other person is not thinking anything? And then there's another example from a science museum where there was a school field trip, and there was lots of like probably eight to twelve-year-olds hugging this whole exhibit, and they're constantly working on it, and there's littler kids who are behind them, and because they're not forming a line, there's nobody minding them, they're just hugging the front face and doing their thing. And then this one kid comes along, and my son is amongst the littler kids behind. This one kid comes along, and he gets the ball, and instead of doing the thing himself, he gives the ball to my little son. And I'm like, that's so kind of you, and I commented this to him. And then this other kid who was already there and participating this whole while, he looks and he does the same thing, he gets the ball, and he gives it to the other little kid. So this gives me the encouragement that if you communicate and you catch people doing things that are empathetic, then maybe we have a better chance of having equity around us. And that's it. Thank you.
Annie, did you want to add anything before I?
I could contribute.
I wanted to emphasize again, you know, what the team has really worked on is removing those barriers as well as fighting against maintaining the status quo. I think sometimes we as systems and as schools fight to return to a time that was easier and comfortable, or return to a time that helps us be clear about what we're doing because we've always been it that way. One thing I want to really point out with the team, even though each of them have come in with their own perspective of which niche they were talking about, collectively, they brought up a lot of things that we are already doing in HSC, that I'm proud to say we are already doing in HSC. And because we are doing them, like when Zarmina talks, I'm thinking of the transformational cell work we've been working on the last couple of years of the melding of equity and social emotional learning, and how to build that empathy for our students. I just want to say, you know, we understand and recognize that many of these recommendations that are being brought forward are things that we have seen, but it's very important that the team, so they needed the time, after two years of working together, to come and reemphasize the need for this to continue, so that the story for, the narrative that our students are believing in their head based on a zip code, or a skin color, or a diversity marker that they have, isn't necessarily what is the reality and what they can turn it into. So they really wanted to reemphasize it with all of us that are here today, that what we're doing is important, and if there is anything more that we can do by providing mentorship, by really focusing on empathy, by really talking about how we are going to bring this training forward to our staff, and how we're going to, as a school board, as a cabinet executive, how are we going to ensure that these things are happening? Because this is what will change, and will get us away from being in that status quo that we sometimes find ourselves trapped in. I think many of us learned in the pandemic that we didn't want things to go back to the way they were, because we learned at that time, it wasn't working for everybody, and it never had. And therefore, coming out of it, we all made a commitment to ourselves to make it, to change that narrative that was in our head. And so after a couple of years of this pandemic, it's a good time for us to reflect that, is our work really matching what we're saying in these recommendations?
I want to add a little bit on to that. Yes, we definitely recognize that a lot of our suggestions are being enacted already in schools, but we also wanted to kind of bring up that it's not necessarily evenly enacted, and there needs to be a little bit more evaluation about why is that happening? Like, why is M.L.A., why do they have the PAC dollars, and they give points, and kids get money for being good when, you know, Mintra Bridge doesn't, or something like that. I'm not, I'm not pinning out specifics because I don't know the specifics. But I just wanted to say, like, it's really important for us that it's, that it's a top-down message, everybody firmly believes, or maybe not even believes in their core, but is ready to outwardly face as a district, this is what we want. We want every single student to feel like they belong at our school. And if another school is doing it better, that's amazing. How do we implement it at this other school? What tweaks do we need? So we really want to emphasize that feedback loop and checking in with the targeted audience. So if you start a mentorship for Latino kids, like, and you go back, and the Latino kids are like, this doesn't work for us, it's good to know, it's information. And like, if you tried, how do we pivot? How do we continue on from this point? So we really want that feedback loop and checking in with the targeted groups, as well as, like we said, everybody's kind of replicating the same thing, like, hey, we want you here, you matter, and hopefully that gets through to the students then.
One of the things, excuse me, that I was surprised to see, looking at the student surveys, was the students that came in as freshmen, and their survey scores were off the charts. They were happy-dappy, and everything is fine. Now granted, it's a new experience, and a new environment, and the world is starting to open up to them, but the sad part of the flip side of that coin was the 11th graders and the 12th graders who were freshmen are now reporting a different experience. And it shows by the numbers, you know, and we can quantify the numbers all we want, but there's something that happened when they entered as a freshman and left as a senior. I would feel that the score should go up into the positive, but they went down into the negative. Therefore, yeah, the board, we as teachers and staff have failed somewhere in that system. So that was one of the things that caught my eye, sitting on this board, looking at, and that goes to what Shiro was saying, we need that equity, we need that across the board, everybody gets the same experience. Okay? That's it.
Here I am presenting, if there's any questions, I don't know if you have any comments or questions. I recognize the time, but I do want to add it.
I just had a question and a comment. So, one, I was, and learning about DEI work now is cool, because if you're going to be the workforce, everybody's doing DEI work in the workforce? So learning as students, so what does that work entail and what it means, I think it's really important for us to have that acceptable, starting at school, and their future workforce, and their future careers. Looking at the, I really thought it was a great strategy to first have, with all the areas and all of that. One thing I did, we all here, and I know it's like a area down there, is around communication. I was wondering if that is going to be a future thing that's going to come in, since some of your recommendations are on communication engagement, if you have that presenter scheduled to come in to kind of share about how they do engagement and outreach and that part of it, to influence or maybe collaborate on the recommendation right now.
One of the things that we have been talking about the last couple of years is the challenge between getting information and understanding how the system is working, and hearing from folks who can help us understand data and, you know, what we're looking at. And then we also have this hunger to be able to, like, tap into, okay, what are students experiencing? What are parents experiencing? How do we start getting into that data? Because we can, we can hear what our, you know, our ODE data is, and we can look at our discipline, you know, disparities and that kind of thing, but we need to understand how people are experiencing the system, and that was kind of a tricky thing. So learning from Beth, what systems exist, would be great, but we also had students on the panel who were telling us about how they experience communication and what's not working for them. So being able, that felt really important to us, to be able to learn how our customers, the people we serve, are experiencing this thing.
I think that's a great strategy. I'm just thinking if there's a way of changing based on what you heard, like, is there a better way for us to deliver on this? Especially thinking about like our career pathways, we have to really keep up with how all the information in there, but is that information getting to the students and the families that we want them to be excited about the future thing? So those are just some ideas of like, as you're hearing how they experience it, how they receive it, is there a way for us to improve it?
Annie, did you have something?
I do, thank you. Well, first, I just wanted to appreciate everyone on the committee for coming in and giving us this presentation. It's a lot of, I can tell, a lot of intentionality, a lot of thoughtfulness went into. It's a lot of, I can tell, a lot of intentionality, a lot of thoughtfulness went into those recommendations. And so I do appreciate that. Two questions that I had. One was, I know it's been mentioned and even hearing some of those recommendations, I agree, we are doing many of those things in our district already. Do we have a report or a slide that might overlay what we currently are doing in our district and how that fits into the different categories of recommendations that have been brought forward? And if there isn't something like that, Francesca, is that something that can be created so that we can see of the recommendations, where we're currently at as a district in terms of what we've already implemented and what we already have, as opposed to just reinventing the wheel? And then the second question is, with those recommendations, has the committee thought about the, I guess, the budgetary impact, if any, in some of those actions that would come from these recommendations? And, I guess, yeah, just wondering what the budgetary impact would be and how, what the resourcing of these recommendations would look like from a district level?
I can definitely, if you give me a week, I can get that out to you, an overlay of the report. I think that's a wonderful suggestion for us to show one of the recommendations and what are we already doing in HSC, if that's something that the board is saying. We're always in constant contact with Michelle on how we're making budgetarily fit into what we need, but we all do, all understand that we are in a time where coming out of that circle and a lot of things, we're talking about our mashed potatoes and our gravy and what we need to do in order to bolster up what we feel is essential for us and what is it that we maybe need to reimagine. But I do know that in my partnership with working with OSP and Audrey and Brooke as well as with our budgeting office, that we do try to find ways when we do not have perhaps funding to come up with creative solutions. And so I think as we head into the new year, it gives us an opportunity to really think about what are the things that we're going to actually need once I come up with, once we come up with a sheet? And what is it that, how much is it possibly going to be? And is there other ways we can potentially fund that or receive those kinds of services? Being our first time coming in front of you, I think this is monumental for us and I think it gives us a lot of ideas of what we can do moving forward.
Francesca, just a couple of comments. Thank you, Sheer. One, I wanted to say some serious thanks to Mr. William for the warm, roll tide of welcome that you gave me when I came to give RJ his course. And I really, I really appreciate it. And it was deeply felt and I just want to, I just want to. The other thing I wanted to say was just acknowledgement and thank you for acknowledging the importance and the understanding of emotional intelligence. So critical, so critical, so critical. And emotional intelligence is one of those things that we can teach as children. It becomes a part of the learning. And so I was just thrilled to death that you talked about that. I teach that at work as often as I can and so it's near and dear to the heart. So thank you for mentioning that. Finally, but absolutely not least, Annie, so good to see you. Those of you who are not familiar, newer board members who may not know Annie, but let's just say that Seth has a warm place in our heart, which is her child and is now still in Europe going to school. No.
Transferred to a limit.
Okay. We can handle that, but it doesn't matter. That child could do anything that they want to do. And we deeply appreciate it. Good to see you.
I have been looking forward to the presentation and I also wanted to thank Jennifer and Jessica and Francesca for your leadership with the committee, forming the committee, and also just the quality of the work that you all put into the recommendations that you expressed tonight and sharing the voice in how you express those recommendations in three parts. I think comes across really clearly to me and to the school board. And I just want you to know that through Francesca, we learn about what happens at those meetings and by attending the meetings and sharing information, we feel like we're part of that work as well with the EEAC. So thank you for your leadership as members of the EEAC. There are a few things that stuck out to me. Shira, the way that you talked about an expectation for all staff to interrupt bias-based aggressions and hate speech on point. And that's the kind of training that we're providing for our staff. And something that I'm really passionate about is that we would all have the equipment and the skills and the practice to be able to interrupt in the moment when that happens as adults. Also, the values you expressed about supporting language learning, students who are neurodecent, students who are experiencing mental health issues and really creating an inclusive school district is right in line with how we talk about our work also. William, the way that you talked about revisiting our attendance policies and our discipline practices and creating more outreach to learn how we're doing with those things and actually make a difference in the lives of families and students, that really resonated with me. Also, the suggestion that we communicate better, especially regarding IEPs. I hear when I talk to parents about how hard it is to understand our special education system and how complicated that is. So that really fits with something that I know we need to improve on all the time. Zarmina, the way that you, I echo what Nancy said, the way that you connected empathy with equity is something that resonates with me too. If we can't feel each other, we can't interrupt those aggressions that happen or understand the disparity in experience between kids who have been marginalized and those who haven't. And it's an emotional connection with some headwork also that needs to happen for us to be leaders in that work. So thank you for, you said that in a way that I hadn't heard about, an emotionally intelligent communication strategy.
Emotionally intelligent equity communication strategy.
I love that concept and I love the way that you've explained it. And then we have a lot of data from, like, the institution, but we need to be faster and more intentional about the data that we get from families and students about the way they experience our institution. Thank you all.
Yeah, first, they're not going to be the last. And my recollection is that when we got the governmental mandate to form this committee, there wasn't a lot of time. It was created with some sense of urgency. So, thank you all for springing into action and getting this in place so we remain compliant. And thank you for coming tonight and I look forward to seeing you again. Our next agenda item has another guest, another requirement to our integrated pest management overview. William, thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Lord, sir. Awesome. I'd like to introduce Will Lenzloff. He's our environmental and safety supervisor for the district. And we're going to provide an overview of our IPM plan. Among the things that Will oversees in our district, water testing, air quality, integrated pest management is one of them. So, you're going to receive a presentation, ask, hopefully ask any questions you have during the work session. And you'll notice there's another item later on during the board meeting where it's the approval of this said plan. So, I'm going to turn it over to Will and he'll get us started.
Thank you for that introduction, Shira. Integrated pest management. The work in law requires school districts to implement an integrated pest management plan. Integrated pest management involves understanding pests and what they need in order to reduce their impact on our school communities. The least harmful way to reduce pests is generally to prevent them from being able to access our buildings. This process involves reducing harborage around the perimeters of our buildings and to seal up possible entry points. Next slide. Integrated pest management can be thought of as a pyramid, with the most important aspects providing the base. Education and communication are the foundation of an IPM plan because they have the largest impact. By teaching the principles of an IPM plan to our building inhabitants, we can help them to make informed decisions that will reduce the conducive conditions that enable pests to thrive. Pests require food, water, and shelter. Building occupants can reduce a pest's access to food by storing plastic containers instead of cardboard or paper. We can reduce access to water by keeping faucets and drains in good repair. And potential shelter can be reduced by minimizing clutter. Mechanical controls are the primary means of dealing with pests once they have reached our properties. With pesticides only being employed once other methods have been proven. An integrated pest management plan is designed to evolve as we evaluate what is working, what changes can be made. Next slide, please. A successful IPM plan will produce better health outcomes by both reducing pests and keeping pesticide use minimal. Long-term costs are lower with an IPM plan because pests have a harder time competing against a healthy environment that does not offer ready access to their needs. Without a food and water supply, most pests will go elsewhere. Without shelter, they will need to seek it somewhere else. Pesticide use has an inherent risk to the ecosystem. One risk is in the form of destroying beneficial organisms alongside the target species. Once the beneficial organism has been killed, there's less competition with the harmful pest. Next slide, please. Guidance from the Oregon Department of Agriculture regarding which pesticides are approved for use on school campuses have a few requirements. Pesticides must have an EPA registration number. The signal word must be caution. Caution is the lowest toxicity rating. Chemicals used in the pesticides cannot be classified as likely, probable, or a human carcinogen. In addition, the pesticide must have schools listed as one of the approved sites. Next slide, please. Most schools do not require any treatment throughout the year. When a treatment is required, the most common pests are ants. Our standard procedure is to manage resistance will be to rotate the chemical family every three months. This will ensure that a resistance does not develop. Next slide, please. Plant health and sustainability are partners in an IPM plan and can be achieved by both choosing native plants that can resist climate change and using mulch to prevent weeds and maintain moisture. These two steps will reduce danger of pests and their associated costs due to treatment or replacement. This picture is of our moon tree that was recently planted at Tamarack Elementary. The location on the property was chosen because this species, a sweet gum, requires sun with moist but well-draining soil. The soil was amended to provide a slightly acidic growing medium. As you can see, the tree is now ready for mulch. And since summer is fast approaching, we have added a tree bag to provide water since taken the picture. Next slide, please. This picture, also taken at Tamarack, shows the compatibility of IPM with the concept of crime prevention through environmental design, or SEPTED. The picture shows a defensible space around the building which will refuse shelter to pests of both the four and two-legged variety. These plants, what the pests will require are very little water. They are low maintenance and will not grow large enough to hide pests or to block visibility from the windows. In conclusion, the changes that we are seeking to make to our IPM plan will help to clarify that we will use a targeted approach when managing weeds and pests on our campuses. While pesticides may at times be used to control noxious weeds and disruptive pests, they play only a minor role in our endeavor to provide a healthy and safe learning environment. And we are also making additions to our low-impact pesticide list. We are using the guidance provided by the Oregon Department of Agriculture in our selection of products while we manage pest resistance and preparing for potential changes in regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the team? Thank you. Nice job. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
We'll be taking action on this tonight.
Yeah, it's going to be great.
So, as you know, Hillsborough is working out of the campus.
Yep.
And I've fallen cold on being stung by a wasp. And they're still on the campus, along with many mosquitoes. How do you, will this, like, affect us?
No. The way we deal with wasps is actually, I personally do this. I fill up a spray bottle or a pump sprayer with laundry detergent and water and then you hose them down. Laundry detergent will coat their body and they can no longer breathe and that takes care of them. Anytime you encounter them, just report them to a teacher, your custodian, and they'll put in a work ticket and they'll come out right away.
Thank you.
Sorry, we just acknowledge that it didn't help and we still got stung.
True. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
We had a presentation from the Equity Advisory Committee and now we have, as you know, we have three of these to the board and I think, starting off?
Yeah. We got the opportunity to open eight community spots and six student spots going into next year as we know their policy, IFF. We have the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee. This year, two curriculums and nine courses. The CCAC went through the process and proposed to you. So, this year, the hope is that we can announce those spots and get that going for your recommendation. We have eight community spots this year and you saw this in your packet because we had one member, Position 13, who passed away early this year. So that is why we have eight openings instead of the usual seven to advertise to our community. Any questions?
And of the seven open, none of them want to remain or is that a thing? It feels like generally when people want to stay on, are they just, we make note of them that they're on when we do the applicant review.
And they will have the opportunity to apply again for their, for spots. Yeah.
Interestingly, I had a similar thought to Mark when I was praying for the meeting. As someone who's served on a lot of community boards through the years, there are some boards that sort of the appointing authority expects those who are currently serving, if they apply to continue, to certainly be able to continue. And there are other boards where it's approached completely de novo, where you don't have any expectation of continuing. So I thought, as a board, we may want to consider at some point being more clear for members about which way, how we feel about that. If we are incumbents, do we intend for them to continue because of their experience or do we intend for it to be totally looked at anew? I don't think in the past we've made, given any advice and we just kind of told people to reapply. But I, as a board, community board member, have often appreciated knowing which way does system work. That's just an idea for the future to share.
Yeah, thinking that, what have we done in the past? They may note that they're currently serving on the application process. That's what we've certainly done in the past?
Yes, and then we'll encourage each applicant to come in September to share a little bit about themselves and also make note of any terms of service in their prior term.
I think board members, everybody feels their own way, but probably, starting on the same old playing field, but probably if somebody's served admirably, unlikely to go, oh, the checkbox in their, but that's just how I view it, I guess. Right. So, you've worked something with that for going to be, when do we appoint this? First meeting, second meeting?
That would be in September at our, let's see, in the, at our retreat. I'll go over our work plan. We'll review that. Rose, can you help me? Is that the first or second meeting in September?
Right, it's the regular session.
Our second. Number?
We'd have to vote on it or whatever. Right.
I think we have it as September 13.
They must be received by September 13th and we will.
Session, okay. Yeah. And then we'll begin our work in October.
Okay. We also have availability on the Budget Committee.
Yes, thank you. Are we moving to the next slide?
We are.
Yes, we have. Every year we have positions turning out. We currently have two positions that have been vacant and they were vacant throughout this last budget development cycle. And then Position Four is currently occupied by Christine Adams-Lomberg. This is her second time. I haven't heard from her. If she's intent-
I haven't heard from her if she's intending to apply again, but I would encourage folks, I know that there's a lot of competition, there's some fun committee. But our board members especially, really minimal way, but they will know about the district, please encourage them to apply. Our deadline is November 1st. However, if we don't receive enough applications, we'll just keep it open on a rolling basis. So, please encourage folks to apply.
Right. And then Francesco?
We currently have 10 positions that are open. This is the first cycle of two years. We also hold more participants than the other two groups, which is why the larger number. We are pretty full in the family and caregiver area, but in the community, students and staff area, we definitely are seeing that we will need some representation, and I have, Rose has provided with me, for me, some of the student names that we can check into. But anybody is willing, that's willing to apply, we're more than happy if you, it's posted on our website, if you're interested in applying, and we'd love to have you.
And the procedure there is less, the board doesn't generally vote on the participants.
Exactly.
You vet the potential participants to bring us the list.
Yes, and with, in partnership with Travis, and then we bring the list. The list I plan, intend to bring in August retreat, that we're ready to go in September. And the age limit in high school is just high school, so high school age in it.
Anybody have any questions regarding the three committees, four committees? Oh, yeah, so we have vacancies on them? Get out there and recruit your friends, I guess? Okay. Cona has some information on an action item we will be voting on downstairs.
It doesn't have a calendar.
So, you're happy.
So, Michelle and I are going to actually tag team this one because we have to do with benefits. So, something that we've looked at for over the years is looking at how we can make our district destination for those that are supervisory technical and administrative. And so, when we, the district, offer insurance, when you're in the classified and licensed ranks, you're a part of negotiations and bargaining unit, and so that's a raise your cost because you're a part of the insurance pool. When you step into a supervisory technical or into an administrative role, that no longer, that full insurance plan is no longer a part of what you can do because of the number of people that are a part of that. Supervisory technical. And so, we have been trying to use things over the years to be creative to try to mitigate that beneficial access for folks that it's not going to increase their cost. And so, I would just say that something I've noticed over the years is that we have younger people that are coming into those ranks of supervisory technical and administrative roles who have families, and so they have to pay more for insurance because they're not only covering for themselves, but also their families. So, when they were in like a licensed role or a classified role, they can be a part of the insurance pool, and that would not be the whole cost of the district support. So, right now, this year is like $13.70. And so, when you're a part of an insurance school, you could choose a plan that's going to be less than that amount, and so it's not a cost change. But when you step into the ranks of being a supervisory technical or administrative, you have to pay out-of-pocket to be insured, you're $800. So, that has really impeded some of our recruitment and retention of folks, and so we want to thank the long days of what are we doing to make our district a nation, not only for salaries, but also for benefits. I'm going to turn it to Michelle, kind of pop more of yourself out.
So, you know, traditionally, we have a line of the district's contribution towards insurance, and like Cona said, that both the licensed and classified staff have the benefit of the insurance. It's like a, can be a low-cost, low-cost for medical, and then including, and together, and if they move into those administrative or super tech ranks, they move to a tiered rate. So, whether you're an employee with children or an employee with a full family, your out-of-pocket cost can be several hundred dollars every month. So, any increase they may have realized in terms of compensation is lost due to the increased cost in insurance, and that's what we're here, Cona, speaking to. So, the language we've added here is very specific around our high deductible plans that are coupled with the health reimbursement arrangement. Those are the most affordable, most practically economic plans that we offer. That, and in that, our, the out-of-pocket monthly premium will be in alignment with the licensed staff, which is similar to how we have our, the rest of our benefit structure. It's complicated to explain, but I think you guys get the gist of it. When your insurance goes up and your wages go up, there's no incentive for you to make the leap into leadership position.
So, taking no action, and what we have right now is if a teacher goes through an administrative training program, and we'd like to, they express interest in becoming a principal, they may have to take a pay cut, overall, a compensation cut, because their insurance is going to cost them more to cover their family, potential family. That's like our current situation, if we don't take action, that's what remains in place.
Thank you.
That essentially what we're talking about? So, trying to make it more appealing for a teacher who we see leadership potential to become a principal or a vice principal or something like that at a school.
I would add classified staff that wants to move into those roles as well.
Yeah, yeah.
They can not be involved in a, say, schooling for a cost.
I think there are two people with families, because if you're on a tiered rate and it's just yourself a coverage, it's well below the district contribution towards insurance. But as soon as you start adding members to your plan, your cost can be, the tiered rate is $2,000 a month, and our district contribution is $13.70. So, that's a huge shift for people.
Anybody have any questions regarding the program?
So, is the new, I know that we're, we have to agree to this, but I guess my question is, have we begun to quote-unquote socialize this with the union, with the staff, the coming, what we're doing? It usually, what happens from state perspective, there's a huge communication, and they really work, I mean, there's a lot of intentional communication with staff.
We, I'm, with the impacted staff, this isn't a union issue necessarily. We're not like jumping over the fact that we haven't settled with our bargain. We're not making adjustments. In terms of a huge communication tool, I think we'll use it when it comes to recruitment and retention. We'll communicate that change, but the rest of it is pretty not impactful to the larger groups, I would say.
Right, this, the group we're talking about is not representative of a collective bargaining table.
That's about four and a half percent of our staff. It's a pretty small group. Normally, half of those are taking district insurance.
And I meant that only in terms of the, but I understand.
Thank you, Nancy.
You've all seen this action item on our, downstairs, so. Uh, not too bad. Our, our final discussion item up here is regarding board leadership for the upcoming year. Evette and I have some suggestions or whatever, but in the spirit, you're supposed to speak last. No one has expressed interest in the chair or vice chair position. Can that's something you want to do now? And I can share what we've been discussing. We had an unusual situation where we had a first-year board member step into the vice chair role last year, which was somewhat extraordinary, but thank you so much for doing that. And I am a firm believer that no one should be chair for too long because people being chair 15 years and things like, it's not, it doesn't serve the district well to have only one person's perspective at the chair. So, because vice chair is the only role she's ever known, she, I tried to explain to Evette that being a regular board member is a lot different and less time-consuming than being in the chairs that we currently sit in. And maybe someday she'll have that experience, but not yet. In our discussions, what we would like to suggest, and if y'all are interested in doing this, we would switch. Evette would become the chair for next year, and I would become the vice chair. It's unusual for the chair to go to a vice chair role, but it's not unprecedented for a previous chair to serve in the vice chair role. I don't want to speak for Evette, but still being fairly new to board service, I'm hopeful that if, if I'm there along for the ride, it would help provide some confidence and assistance along the way. So, I think what we're, what we are intending to suggest is that we switch spots for next year. Somebody have anything they want to say about that? It's our planning, so now's your time to discuss.
Yes, and I also think we have to start thinking about future planning as well because it is hard to do, you know, like, it's good, two years of being a chair is great. I did do that, and there's some, it's nice to have that continuity, but also to build up the leadership and share the responsibility because it's a lot of work, and it's a sacrifice to do that work. I feel like there needs to be some effort to share that.
It's much bigger time commitment than I was led to believe it was. But I think Evette's had a good...
It's going to be fun, though.
I've had a good preview of that, so I think she knows what she's getting into.
Correct.
Do you have, so, anything you want to share about taking on a new responsibility?
Um, it's a big one, and it's a big challenge, and I'm excited about it, but having Mark next to me as a guide is very important to me because I'd rather have, you know, make mistakes or learn more with him already in that experience versus me turning around and then not having anybody if I did it last year, or this next coming, next coming year. So, experience and...
Well, that, that will be our suggestion, so I guess this is essentially my last board meeting as chair. So, we'll, but we, we are having one session in July where we'll quickly swear in the new board chair and unfortunately, new student representative, well, unfortunately, we have a great new crop of students, but we'll be sad to see y'all go. So, yeah, if, if people seem comfortable with this plan, and to Erica's point, I'm a big believer in always be training and replacement. That's something everybody should be doing in the world, no matter what. So, we will have four board seats open for election in May, in the next May, and I don't know how many of us are planning to continue or not, so, you know, there could be quite a bit of change coming a year from now, so it'd be great for, if that, start on that All right. The work session is adjourned. We will meet downstairs, post haste, whatever.
Hillsborough School District 1J Regular Session is now in order. We'll begin as we always do with the flag salute. Flag is back there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Atolladi indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County in the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on, the Tualatin Kalapuya, Cthulamet, Clacimis, Tomwater, Malala, bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. In remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous Native First Peoples community living in the metro area, which includes over 400 tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. Hello and welcome. Before we begin, I would like to provide some important information about our interpretation services. Please remember to speak clearly and directly into the microphones at a moderate pace. Please do not speak over one another so that interpreters can convey your message. Thank you for your cooperation. All right. And now we are at the point in the evening where we usually do recognitions proclamations, right? All right. Oh, this is last week? This is last week, all right, or last time, all right, but I have it, all right. Because the board recognizes the value of students' input on matters that are important to them, board members established a position of student representative to the Board of Directors, beginning with the 2018-2019 school year. Last year in June, RJ Panlelo from the Glencoe High School, Hadley Brathapan from Hillsborough High School, and Aliana Shalakar from Oak Street Campus were appointed to serve as student representatives to the Board of Directors in the Hillsborough School District. Throughout the year, RJ, Hadley, and Aliana have invested countless hours studying board meeting materials and preparing to discuss agenda items, speaking to the interests of students not only during board meetings, but by advocating to legislators for adequate and stable school funding, and representing the district at a variety of events. RJ, Hadley, and Aliana have served as liaisons, maintaining open channels of communication between the board and students. RJ, Hadley, and Aliana's terms of service end this month, and we take this opportunity to thank them sincerely for their dedication and valuable service, and wish them success as they complete their high school education and move forward in their future endeavors. Our next agenda item, not pest control, it's this. What do you have? All right. Would anybody care to make a motion regarding the agenda?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
It's been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director McGuire that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Motion carries. Do we have any audience time tonight? Do we have any audience time tonight? Welcome, folks. Uh, would anybody care to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move that the board of directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Thomas that the board of directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. All right. Now, I have, so we will, no recess, no anything, just, just open a budget. Okay. This is the final public hearing prior to board adoption of the 2024-25 budget document, which the Board Budget Committee approved on April 23rd, 2024. This is a time for public testimony. The board will have an opportunity for questions and comments during the action items portion of the hearing. Any community member who wishes to speak should complete an intent to speak form located at the top of the HSD website and submit it to the executive assistant or the, of the superintendent, Rose Roman, seated here, or to the email. Well, yeah. All right. So, the budget committee hearing is open. Do we have any testimony regarding the budget? All right. The budget is, the hearing portion is closed. All right. Uh, would anybody care to make a motion regarding the budget while we were still in the budget hearing?
I'd like to move that the board of directors adopt the resolutions to adopt the 24-25 budget, appropriate the 24-25 budget, and impose 24-25 taxes and categorize the levy as shown in the June 18th, 2024 board meeting packet.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Pantoja that the board of directors adopt the resolutions to adopt the 2024-2025 budget, appropriate the 2024-25 budget, and impose the 2024-25 taxes, and categorize the levy as shown in the June 18th, 2024 board packet meeting. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to go on the record.
Get your mic closer.
Sorry. I just, I've been reading a lot, unfortunately, uh, about things happening across the country and in other districts, even within the state, and I just want to say thank you. We always brag about you, we talk about you, and we deeply appreciate you, but nothing is more important than making sure that we know and having the confidence and knowing that we have a person who is taking care of the business and the finances of this district. It's an overstatement, but I need you to understand when I say thank you, because I don't ever want to be in a situation where myself or any of my fellow board members would have to discover that we were eight million over budget, or whatever the case is. It, we don't have that problem, and we don't have that problem because of you. So, thank you, you and your staff and everybody. So please understand when we say thank you, that's just the minimum of words that we have right now, but please take that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support as we go through the budget development process. It really is a whole fleet of people in my office working so hard to, to make sure that we land our plane, so to speak, um, and plan ahead for our future, so I really appreciate that. I did want to just make a note that there is a difference between the proposed budget document that we originally presented and the approved budget document now, um, that Mr. Jeff Jones did an excellent job incorporating the appropriation changes that were approved last month, and so those are now all incorporated throughout the document and through the 23-24, um, columns in the financial section. So I just wanted to note that for anybody who's out there with a calculator, working it, it does look a little bit different, and this is the version we'll move, uh, towards adoption.
And the version that we, that I just made a motion on includes the, the adjustments.
Yes, includes the new appropriations.
Thank you.
And that was the suggested plan based on our audit from last year, essentially, right? Like, if there's going to be anomalies over, and these may not be, but they're close enough that we should just be careful.
Yes, that's correct.
Right. Other comments or questions?
I'd just like to, uh, agree very much with what Director Thomas said, that the controllership, the governance, and the forecasting, it's really exemplary among, uh, public agencies that we have here in Hillsborough, so thank you for leading this very effective team.
Thank you. It's a privilege.
Yeah, thank you doesn't feel like enough. Thank you, Jeff, for being here tonight, and, um, it's, I always knew about our 4% ending fund balance and dancing on the head of a pin and what kind of, when you say landing the plane, how, how hard that is, and when I hear about districts nearby with 12% ending fund balances or things like that, uh, we, we have chosen over the years to make your job harder by doing that, but the consequence was keeping more people during difficult times. So, I, I realize the conflicting choice, we, we made your job harder, but we were able to keep a lot more of our staff than we would have had we not done that. So, I think it was just before I got on it, right as I got on, we went from five to four, four point five, and during the time of Director Lopez and myself, we went from five point five, four point five to four, and I, it saved numerous jobs, but it did make your job harder and your whole department's job harder, and I appreciate the extra work you do to keep those people around.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Rose, can you please call the roll?
She and Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Patrick McGuire?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries. Muted. All right. Um, all right, so now I. Oh, do we adjourn the budget? No, I think we have to. All right. Cool. We will just move on to the action items portion of our agenda. Um, and first up is the replacement boilers. Say, do you have some? Share a mic with her.
Thank you, yes. Um, so our HVAC team, uh, conducted some preliminary assessment on our Liberty High School boilers and, um, recommended that several of them be replaced because they were failing or one of them was, had failed. So we decided to get a second opinion. We brought down, um, Will Dan, which is the contractor for our HVAC unit at Liberty High School, and they conducted an assessment as well and confirmed that, um, the boilers would, potentially would not make it through winter. And so, because we have essentially shut down Liberty High School to do the HVAC project, it only makes sense that we take the initiative and take care of the boilers to avoid any issues with heating come wintertime. We're dressing the HVAC piece with the, uh, air conditioning, but, um, the boilers are are critical for the heating of the building. And, um, and so their recommendation, Will Dan's recommendation was to go to four energy efficient boilers, uh, as opposed to the five boilers we currently have, um, with the amount that's stated there, and, uh, we plan to use, um, bond maintenance funds to, um, purchase and, uh, complete this project. Uh, hopefully this summer is our goal, so if we were to get this approved today, we can then reach out to the company and confirm and sign a contract, and they could potentially get into our building in the next two weeks.
Any questions regarding this?
Yes, thank you, uh, and thanks for answering my question. So, you were saying that you're hoping to get it done this summer. Is there a possibility it won't get done this summer? And then what's plan B if that's the case?
They had guaranteed, uh, completing it by the end of August, um, if we were to start the project within the next two weeks. Knowing that our teachers do come back, uh, towards the end of August, so there may be some, uh, final things that need to be completed while the teachers are in the building, but it won't impact, uh, the HVAC system, which will be working, and this would be for, uh, the boiler system, which is really for the heating unit in the school.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, I sense you might just overlap with it. Some of the work may overlap within service week, but fairly confident we'll get it done in time before. Probably shouldn't need too much heat in August.
Would hope not, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Uh, thank you for, thanks to your team for doing the extra analysis on this. I like that we're going to four efficient ones instead of five. Um, I'm guessing, just for clarification, the, I think our bond funds are all used up, so this has to come from general fund dollars essentially, right? No? Okay, shake your head. Where, so where's this money coming from?
We have a million dollars of bond funds, uh, bond maintenance funds allocated each year, uh, throughout, for, for the next two years, so a million each, so a big chunk is going to be, uh, used for this project, uh, but it's, it's necessary.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm glad, I, I knew that Michelle and her team, once again, did an exemplary job of planning for the long term, and another good example of that. Uh, 2017, so do we have two years left that we can spend in the bond? And then Michelle, more of a question from Michelle, I guess. We have like two years left before we have to have all the bond funds gone?
Yeah, there's no limit on the remaining bond funds. We can carry them, but it's 85% within three years. So after that, they, you can stretch them out as long as they're available to you. Um, there are additional funds still earmarked for, uh, acquisition of property and, um, some technology items down the, down the road a little bit, as those things come off cycle. So we, and that was Adam Stewart. That was not, I have a lot to do with that, but I'm thankful to support that, um, thinking ahead, um, as we set ourselves up for our next bond ask from the community.
So confirming that we, we met the 85% expenditure, we did that three years, we did that.
Yes.
And then the rest of that money, we can then use as needed. For example, here we are, and we have to increase.
Yes, yes, there's far less than 15% left. There's like maybe 5%. I mean, it's, it's a minute percentage, but as far as the, um, tax exempt bonds go, it's that 85 piece, 85% piece in the first three years. They want to make sure that the projects that you had planned to do with those dollars are accomplished, so that's, that's what makes it tax exempt.
Awesome.
Makes us grateful again to be in that position that years ago, our community supported us, that in addition to stories of budgetary anomalies, uh, there are many stories of districts having difficulty getting their community to invest in their infrastructure, and, uh, I know we can't spend bonds on people, we have to spend it on things, but I'm glad that we have it available. Would anybody like to make a motion here?
I move that the board of directors approve the Energy Services Company, ESCO, currently under contract for the Liberty High School HVAC control system replacement, to also include the boiler replacement project to their scope of work for summer 2024 completion.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Ward that the board of directors approve the Energy Services Company, ESCO, currently under contract for the Liberty High School HVAC control system replacement, to also include the boiler replacement project to their scope of work for summer 2024 completion. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll, please?
She and Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Patrick McGuire?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, um, the issue we discussed upstairs, do you have anything else to add?
No, I just want to remind people that when, uh, you're, uh, making this vote, it's for, uh, a slight change that's, uh, for the memorandum of agreement regarding benefits, but I will be coming back, uh, after we finish bargaining, uh, just as I, as noted out there, that we will have, everything will remain status quo, but the general salary increase and insurance benefits will be coming forward later on, once we finish bargaining. So I just want to make note that, uh, we will be coming back, but would, uh, appreciate any vote tonight.
Any other questions for Michelle, the, since the issue we discussed upstairs? I like the idea of us remaining competitive and, uh, I don't love that we had a disincentive for people to want to advance their career, so I appreciate we're taking that hurt a lot of the way. Um, and, uh, just a heads up for board members, since you kind of brought it up, I think we will, while the July meeting will be very brief and intend to be just virtual, maybe, do I have to come here? I think maybe not, uh, but, um, we may add a brief executive session afterwards to give a bargaining update, um, because the bargaining committees have completed their work for this academic year, and, uh, HCU does not, NHA both do not have anything scheduled until the fall. So, uh, since we're not going to be continuing, I figured, I thought it was probably essential for us to give you one quick brief update about where things were left and where we're at, so. All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the board of directors approve the 24-27 individual contract with non-union employees, including the recommended MOA memorandum of agreement, is that correct? Revisions and the GSI and health benefit contributions in alignment with the licensed bargain agreements.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Lopez that the board of directors approve the 20-24-27 individual contract with non-union employees, including the recommended MOA revisions and GSI and health benefit contributions in alignment with the licensed bargaining agreement. Is there any further discussion? Rose can call the roll, please.
She and Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Patrick McGuire?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next item is to officially approve the new student representatives to the board. You can be sad, it's okay. I'm sad too a little, but we have, uh, Yvette, Rose and I had an opportunity to speak with 18 or so, really amazing students at our schools, and, uh, and after a lot of discussion on our part, we've, we've, uh, selected these three. Um, the rotation this year is Century Liberty and the Hillsborough Online Academy, and we were able to find students interested in representing our, uh, the district at each one of those institutions, so, um, I think, uh, it's in the packet, so they were, you've already talked to them, right? This isn't like a surprise or anything. Uh, so, from Century High School, our recommendation is Gwen Condor. From Liberty High School, it's Cal Civil, and from the Hillsborough Online Academy, it's Abraham Stapha. And, uh, they were all, once again, all the students were amazing. Do you have any, you want to add like, just such a great group?
No, they're all great.
Yeah. I wish we could have a crop of 10 student representatives, but you just can't, so, um, so, uh, would you like to make a motion to appoint the students?
Yeah. I move that the board of directors accept the recommendation of the interview committee and appoint Gwen Candor from Century High School, Cal Sebel from Liberty High School, Abraham Stapha from Hillsborough Online Academy, to serve as student representatives to the board of directors for the 2020, 2024-25 school year.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Pantoja and seconded by Director Thomas that the board of directors accept the recommendation of the interview committee and appoint Gwen Condor from Century High School, Cal Sebel from Liberty High School, and Abraham Stapha from Hillsborough Online Academy to serve as student representatives to the board of directors for the 24-25 school year. Is there any further discussion?
Aye.
Well, uh, thank you. First of all, thank you to our interview subcommittee for the work you did, um, joyful work, but we appreciate it. I intend to vote yes because I'm confident that our, our interview subcommittee found, uh, some students who will be a great, great addition to our group and do a lot of great work. I do want to briefly, um, put on record, uh, as I did briefly last year, that I believe it would be better to have student representatives be elected by the student body rather than appointed by the board, because I think before calling them representatives, it's characteristic of representative governance that the representatives are selected by the people they are ostensibly representing. Um, and so I, that's a minority viewpoint on my part, but I'd share it briefly before I vote yes for the future and for folks to know, uh, but again, thank you for your work.
Erica?
Um, I just want to say thank you again for taking the time to do interviews. I have done them myself, and they are, it's really hard to choose because we have a lot of really great students, um, as you can see, for example, and, um, I did want to ask just on the selected ones, um, what, if, you can just send us a reminder, Rose, like where, where, what meeting did the applications were in that folder? I would like to revisit like the applications that were submitted, that would be good to kind of refresh my memory.
You may be sending out an, uh, update or something? Yeah, it is kind of nice to circle back and connect the dots, and yes, uh, it is a hard choice. We ended up with great students this year. We've ended up with great students again. We've ended up with great students again, but it is a very difficult choice amongst all those wonderful students. And I hear what you're saying. I it is something to consider. Although I guess uh you just ran, uh, would it just end up being basically the A S B president that would get selected, then I wonder which I you on your way out the door, Hally, we'll ask you questions. Uh, you you've served as student rep. You're about to serve as A S B board president. Uh maybe you have some preview into what the other job is like. Do you my guess that we did an election, it would be probably something end up that way. Is that too much to ask of one student, the time commitment and responsibilities, or do you feel like it'd be manageable? Just curious. Put you on the spot.
I think it'd be manageable, but it would just come down to the the elected person if they're willing to do it because balancing both would be a big task. Especially because uh for Hill High, I actually know next year will be Hill High again, correct? So we stay at school until sometimes till like one A M. So um student government is still a lot of a time management. Adding this on top of it, it would be kind of stressful for them, but I still think you should give them the option. Uh, like Aliana said, that when Patrick brought up the idea, um, she believes that it would just be a popular vote if it's brought to the students. That's why it's a really good idea, but like it's also a challenge to try and fight fight that because for A S B president, I had to get interviewed by admin, uh, and it comes down to their score, then popularity, then staff, and then my activities director. So it's a whole bunch of things I had to like go through in order to get elected for it. So I I don't think it's a bad idea. I just think it should take more time and thinking for it. Because not something you should like do next year, maybe in like two years or three years, but not not so soon.
Yeah. Uh, I I know and I know in our interview committee, we're often grateful that students who uh, sometimes students apply because it's an interview process. It's not so public. So giving, I think oftentimes, at least the times I participated on the student interview committee, we've been we've considered like, is this a person whose voice is sometimes not heard? And giving them a chance to be heard without having to. So I I uh it's worth discussing. We should think about it, though. Yeah.
I think another idea is uh opening it to the people in their student council, like Liberty Student Council, opening applications just them, because it's already student leaders that want to step up. So you can cross out all the rest of the population, but then you also like that's flawed because you want opportunities from others. So it's difficult.
But don't we already intentionally?
Yeah, we have like administrators give us some or like help students suggest, right?
I specifically reach out to administrators so I can get feedback um from them. Um.
I think probably every student who has applied has had like an administrative or teacher mentor. Yeah.
Yeah. I I think the other thing to add is that we were talking about, we want to also highlight students that normally wouldn't go through a process of, you know, a a popular vote or student government path, but equally they're experiencing our system in a different way, and we want to hear their experiences. So often when Rose goes out and we tell her like want students that are arranged, you know, not just the four point O student, which is great, but also the ones that are not doing so well. And how do they also get their voice in this? And having them go through a different processes. Yeah, it's.
Turned into a whole discussion. Yeah, okay. Uh, it's not worth, we shouldn't discount completely, though, but yeah.
No, I I like the idea. I do. I like the idea of making it to some degree that they're representing, you're representing the students. The problem is it in my, the first word that came up in my head was unwieldy. Yeah, that's the first thing that came up because having been you in my day, that's exactly what happened. It was the popular people. It was it was uh, you see what I'm saying? And we created something where that is truly, truly inclusive that allows people who may not get that popularity vote for the SBA president, but they might be able to come back and have an interview one-on-one with a small group of media who tell they're not passionate now about this. But I think it's a good conversation that we need to have.
Because like maybe in November, we have a work session item regarding this, just suggesting. I think it could be me anyways.
Yeah, I I I didn't want to speak too much because I said it previously, sorry, this is giving me a great grief, but yeah, I'm happy to on another occasion to talk about it and I I thought a lot about it and looked at what other districts do and uh different countries even and uh I for me, it really was, I appreciate what's perspective and I thought things similar, but it's good to hear all that, but uh my perspective is just that um, it really comes down to what you see the role as, that if your role is informing the board, then you want different perspectives, of course. If the role is developing student leadership, then you could select however you want. If you genuinely intended to be representative in in a representative democracy, the way you choose that is it's fine. So it really comes down to what you see the role as.
I think, uh, oh, sorry. Another option is having the people like like if it was me last year, having me present to my school and why I should like I'm a viable candidate. So during an assembly possibly, yeah.
Public and scary, you mean? Okay.
But you would also need someone that is ready to speak like that because you're on that scale.
You're you're on a little, you're at you're at a dais.
Exactly. I would actually say I would, I would say that speaking to you guys is more is a higher level than speaking to the rest of my school. So that's that's just my perspective. Sorry.
Sheen, you have your hand up? Something you want to add, Sheen?
Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate Patrick, you bringing this up, and I I think it's a worthwhile discussion. Um, I, having served on some of the interview panels previously for choosing the student rep, you know, I I always approached it um as trying to find folks who may not have gone the traditional path of, and I think, you know, a couple of board members have already mentioned that. I wonder if maybe a a middle ground that we could consider maybe later at a work session is um opening it up for nominations. So each school, you know, nominating a fellow student and us as the board or Rose uh reaching out to the students who have been nominated to encourage them to apply so that they have an additional touch point to encourage them to apply in addition to the ones that have um come to us themselves to apply or something like that. Um, so that we incorporate a bit more of the students nominating their peers and and who they believe would be a good uh student representative. Um but not making it a popularity contest or, you know, something like that, but at least adding in that additional layer touch point of inviting students' voice. Um and we do that through, you know, nominations and we accept their nominations, reach out to them while leaving it open for other folks to kind of self nominate themselves or something like that in the application process. But just wanted to add that, that this could be a further discussion for a work session.
Yeah, I like the idea of talking about it and uh like, like I mentioned in my part over there, we've only had this since the eighteen, nineteen school year, so we're still learning how to be better and I appreciate that all my colleagues are always trying to be better. So.
I think an ideal for mentors is us three are willing to give the new student representatives our phone numbers so we can assist in the mentorship. Like for me, I can be here if you guys need me to pop up, but they can't. Uh, but we're willing to give up our phone numbers for it. So.
You're gonna come on a Tuesday where you're not have to sit up here? You're gonna come and hang out with us? Wow.
Willingly.
Wow, willingly. Okay, I think I've done all of the requisite stuff. So Rose, can you please call the role?
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire. Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Welcome aboard, students. Uh, next action item regards the integrated pest management plan as required by the state of Oregon that we discussed upstairs. Uh, can't imagine there's much else to add. Anything?
Nothing more to add.
Any other questions for today?
No, but happy to make a motion.
Okay, go for it.
Board of Directors approve the annual revision of the integrated pest management plan, and thank you for the detailed link.
Second.
It's moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors approve the annual revisions of the integrated pest management plan. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the role, please?
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire. Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. And thanks, Will, for being with us. All right, that completes our action item portions of the evening. Next up is departmental reports and discussions. First up, financial report from Michelle. Uh, just approve the budget, but shout outs to department members or anything?
Um, yeah, actually, thank you. Uh, we did celebrate her at the retirement uh ceremony over at South Meadows, but Jolene Savay has served in our district for twenty-seven years and is retiring. And I just want to get out on the record, we just really appreciate her commitment to the district over a very, very long time and lots of changes that she's seen. And um, so thank you, Jolene. And um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the report as well.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the financial report? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, uh, the Hillsborough Classified Union has a year and a tech team gonna share it with us? Has a year and video that they would like to share with us?
Good evening, School Board, Chair Watson, Superintendent Ryman, student representatives, cabinet and community members. I'm the president for Hillsborough Classified United, Bethany Schaffner. As you may have noticed this past year, HCU's time on the agenda has looked a little different. We have strived to be inclusive and diverse in the voices that represent classified professionals at H S D. It has been an essential step in supporting the work that allows for classified staff to be seen and heard in their union and their work sites. Our board wanted to share a joint message tonight as we reflect on our work over the past year and look ahead to what is to come.
Good evening. My name is Kira Hartzell. I am the A V Systems Specialist for Hillsborough School District and Bargaining Officer and Chief Steward for Hillsborough Classified United. This past year has been a period of incredible growth for our organization. We have gained over one hundred new members, recruited and trained eleven new worksite leaders, and added five executive board members to our leadership team. It is a season of empowerment, excitement and positivity for our local, and it's encouraging to see classified staff get invested in the issues that affect them most in the workplace. As the leader of the bargaining team, I am most proud of my ten colleagues who have invested their time and energy into the negotiation process this year. It is because of their collaborative work that we have been able to quickly reach tentative agreement on fifteen of the thirty-two articles in our contract. We look forward to resuming our negotiations with the district in the fall. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Carla Broca. I am the Treasurer and Part-Time Release Officer for Hillsborough Classified United and an Educational Assistant and Admin Support One in the Career and College Center at Century High School. Reflecting on my years part-time release officer, I am so grateful to our members in Hillsborough School District for trusting me to do this work and to Bethany and Kira for their unwavering support and enthusiasm for our daunting leadership roles that we were elected into last spring. I have learned so much and been forced out of my comfort zone day after day, but I'm very proud of what we have accomplished. And this year, we have empowered more of our members to advocate for themselves and their coworkers. We have an incredible team at the bargaining table, and we continue to represent our membership with compassion and grace. I am so happy to move forward into next year with a nearly full board of enthusiastic classified professionals that make our union stronger every day. We have accomplished all of the goals we outlined last summer, and I look forward to setting new ones and continuing to strive higher. I hope everyone has an enjoyable summer. Thank you for all your time and dedication to Hillsborough School District.
I'm Alicia Infante, and over the past year, I've had a blast settling into my role as the Political Action Chair. Through joining the A F T Oregon Politics, Policy, Legislation, and Solidarity Council, attending leadership trainings and the Oregon Labor Summit, along with having coffee with our local political leaders, these events have allowed me to forge connections with other unions and leaders who share our concerns in labor and education, which was an important goal for me this year. I also assumed responsibility of leading our contract action team. Our focus remains on ensuring our members are actively engaged in the bargaining process throughout negotiations. I look forward to continuing my efforts to prepare for the legislative session in February in which I plan to organize for impact to advocate for classified staff.
Hello, my name is Paula Lopez. I work as an admin support for the Technology Department. I have been working for the school district for almost fourteen years. I also serve Hillsborough Classified United as the Organizer Officer. As an Organizer Officer, my job is to bring classified workers together to help unite us over the issues that impact us and the students that we serve. Our union members are the heart and soul of our schools. One of my passions is ensuring that H S D is an equitable place for our students and staff. Over the past several years, I have helped lead affinity groups, community outreach, and anti-bias education in my work. It's my core in my work as a union leader. Equity has been also one of my core goals.
Hi, my name is Tiffany St. Clair King. I recently started serving the Hillsborough Classified uh Union as Executive Board Secretary. I've been working for Hillsborough School District since two thousand nineteen as a school bus driver, and I also am interested in Hillsborough School District because I'm a parent and also a taxpayer. I believe that public education is one of the great innovations of modern society and that it benefits the entire community. And as such, I am proud and honored to serve the community as a bus driver and also to serve the classified staff as a member of the Executive Board. Thank you.
Hi, I am Manuel Cota, and I serve Hillsborough School District as a technology support two specialist. I am also the Communication Officer for the Hillsborough Classified Union. I use my technology ability to share union information through flyers, videos, and social media. One rewarding project I have held with is launching our very first H U podcast. Check it out. My goal is to share union information in Spanish as well as English so more classified staff can learn how the union can support them. Thank you so much.
Your work is important. Your work makes a difference. Even more, you are important. You make a difference. Together as the team of classified professionals, together with all the rest of you, we are important. We do make a difference. My name is David Eggleston. I'm a school bus driver and Membership Officer with Hillsborough Classified United.
Who's that report? Had to come see yourself on TV? Can't miss seeing yourself on TV, right? Okay, our next, that was really good. Uh, our next agenda item is the policies on first reading. There's a number of policies and A Rs and the administrative team member responsible for answering questions regarding those. These will be considered on first reading. I'm guessing do we have action items in the retreat or will they be in September? Like, when would we adopt them? Probably not the at the little July meeting, right? I'll give a second.
I didn't um intend to bring them at the July meeting just because they're so quick. So I was going to put them on the August for approval. Um, usually we have an action item or two in August, just because it works out that way. So I'll put them on.
So likely to be in the retreat. Okay. So you have until, I guess, the retreat to ask questions regarding these. And once again, this this gets us pretty close to being compliant at this point, right? Got to be.
They're very close to being done.
So the August before they head back into session, we may be caught up.
In time for them to send me a whole new session.
Right.
In the past, uh, you had found some summaries from O S B A about what changed and why. Is that something we could have for these as well, or do they not have those anymore? Oh, sorry. I said in the past, uh, we've had summaries from O S B A of what changed and why. I didn't see those for these. I didn't see those for these. Are they, are they still providing those? And, okay, if so, I'll look at those when they come up for a second.
Thanks. All right. Next up, HCU, HCA time. Um, let's see, Mary Kay, is there somebody else from HCA here to speak? Okay. HCU? Call it, call it good. All right. That was enough? All right. Thanks so much. Uh, last up is discussion time. We'll begin with our outgoing student representatives. And then never any debate on who goes first and in what order. And the debate continues. Feels like our day got left in.
Why don't we let you go first?
Yeah, you go first.
No, this is your time. This is the student representative's time.
I'm so sad this is our last meeting together, but I've had so much fun being student rep. I feel like I've not only grown as a student, but also like as an individual outside of school, I feel like I've matured so much from this opportunity. So one more time, thank you. I'm gonna miss you guys so much. I'll, I'll definitely send something in the mail, like a little letter. You guys know what I'm doing in college, so, thank you.
This would be great.
Yeah, as, as I think about next steps for, uh, University of Oregon, I don't think I'm gonna ever forget this opportunity. It taught me a lot. It taught me, uh, a new kind of humor, which I really like. Uh, it taught me, uh, just being an advocate for myself as a liaison to the student body, uh, holding myself to a higher standard while also not forgetting my roots as being a student in the Hillsborough School District and just having fun along the way. So, thank you for the journey, and I hope that Cal, Gwen, and Abraham, uh, get our torch and light their way to their future.
See, I'm still gonna be 15 minutes away, so, not like these guys. Uh, so, I really enjoyed my time on, uh, Board, and I believe it's, I keep saying this, we're bittersweet, as RJ said. I, I, he already memorized their names, so he's like one step ahead of me. So, I'm gonna miss sitting here, but knowing that there's gonna be kids that wanna do exactly what we did, uh, makes me feel better, especially because as we grow older, there'll be past generations that'll take, that'll take our spots. And it's, uh, it's sad to hear, but it's good to accept, especially because what we're doing right now paves the way for people behind us. So I want to say I'm proud of everyone on the Board right now because we're, we're making some big impacts, little, day by day. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. I'd like to add something as well. Sure. Uh, so, since the retreat, since the retreat, since, I don't know what happened there. Since the retreat, uh, we weren't expecting it to be eight hours long, so a student reps made a tradition to bring energy drinks every single Board meeting.
We, we always promised them it was being.
Gotcha. Uh, hopefully, we will be able to have a orientation session before the retreat.
Eight hours?
We didn't get that with y'all. I think it was after the retreat, right? Can't remember why, but yes. Yeah, I can remember. Uh, maybe I was gone. I was in Scotland. That's right. Also, it's my fault, but yeah, won't be my fault.
We still enjoyed it.
And I don't, I don't know if the new humor is good or bad, but, all right. Uh, Superintendent's time.
Uh, thank you, Mark. The, uh, congratulations to our students. Thank you for your comments just now. I remember you sitting at that retreat and sort of thinking, what's going on here? And you've really, I've watched you grow and really get into the role and take on the responsibility of being a student leader in this, uh, space, and I just want to appreciate you. Thank you for inviting us to your events and your concerts, and, um, it's been so cool to see you graduate and do the things you do. Guys are gonna be incredible, so thank you for sharing your time with us for last year. Um, thank you to Francesca and her team. The presentation tonight from the EEAC was awesome, and, um, that hadn't happened before, and I was really looking forward to it, and I hope that, um, that was enjoyed by everybody also. The level of engagement of that group has been really high, and I think, uh, the HSD Board was one of the earliest boards to adopt the Every Student Succeeds, uh, policy in the state of Oregon, and then acting quickly to get the EEAC up has really accelerated that work, and Francesca's leadership has been key in both of those things, so thank you. Um, I want to echo, I think Nancy already spoke really well to this, but, um, the reason that HSD is in such good financial standing is because of decisions of our predecessors, and Michelle and the Cabinet Group and I are gonna continue to make decisions that put us in the best possible financial situation. So thank you for the shout outs to Jeff and to, uh, Michelle tonight. Uh, that's incredible work and such a high level of detail and responsibility that they take on every day managing a very large organization. Thank you, Michelle. Um, also wanted to tell you about something that happened today. Uh, school lets out for a couple of days, and we get like back into heavy professional development as leaders. We, uh, hosted today a safety summit at Glencoe High School that included all of our administrators, deans of students. Uh, we had, uh, psychologists, county, uh, county partners, local police department, POIC, um, Latino Network Partners. Saideh Agigi Koishku put that whole thing together with her safety team, um, over the last few months and really responded to the topics that administrators wanted to learn more about and go deeper with in collaboration around how safety, um, can be improved and sustained in HSD. And I was inspired because the conversation wasn't just about our badges and cameras and, uh, the things that we think about, about the physical safety of our students in schools, but it was also about social emotional learning, how to support gender diverse students. Um, Beth did a seminar on, um, political speech as we look forward to an election, uh, cycle. Jordan did a presentation around cybersecurity, protecting student data, um, keeping kids safe online. We had seminars on dealing with difficult custody issues with parents and families and kids to keep kids safe. It was just a really rich day with a lot of breakout sessions, so you could choose your own adventure during the day and had repeating sessions, so if you missed it once, you could catch it again in the afternoon. And then we sat down and had lunch with our partners and opened dialogue about helping kids avoid pathways to violence and, uh, finding pathways to good pro-social behaviors in our community alongside our partners from other organizations. So, um, I think safety is core to our mission. It's core to everything we do to help kids figure out who they are and become incredible community members. And, uh, so, thank you, Saideh, for your leadership, making the safety summit happen today and creating such a big event two days after school got out. One housekeeping thing, uh, Beth asked me to put the Fourth of July Parade in the calendar of events in your Board update, but we haven't done a, a good job advertising that. So if you want to be involved in the Fourth of July Parade, there's an opportunity to contact Beth and her team and get involved in candy throwing and things like that. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Board of Directors time. Sheen, do you have anything you'd like to add tonight?
Yeah, just wanted to, um, uh, first congratulate our student representatives. Thank you all for, for your service on the Board over the last year. Um, and also, congratulations to, to all of our graduating seniors and all of our families. Um, also, Mark and Yvette, thank you for your service on the Board, um, especially in the Chair and the Vice Chair role. Um, I know it takes, uh, a lot more work and effort, and, um, just your, your guys' leadership has, um, been really instrumental, um, for us. Uh, in terms of the Fourth of July Parade, I know that I, my family has had a chance to, to be a part of the Fourth of July Parade over the last couple of years, and it is, it's, it's awesome. If, if folks can, can be a part of that, I know we've always had a blast. My, uh, oldest, Shakina, she was handing out pencils last time, and she was actually very selective of who she, who she handed the pencils to, and so we had to, we had to have her be a bit more generous, but, um, we'll try to be a part of it this year. Um, we'll see in terms of timing with the two little ones, but, yeah, just thank you all for, for another great year.
Thank you. Erica, anything to share tonight?
Uh, a couple of things. Um, one, I just wanted to give a shout out to HCU for their video. I thought that was super great and, uh, a good way to highlight, um, the new members and officers that they have for us to learn about them, so, great job. Um, and then also to my student reps, I'm gonna miss you guys. I, I was thinking about doing something like saying some words that I've learned from my children, but I don't want to embarrass myself, and they're gonna laugh at me. Oh, God, but you guys were amazing. But you guys have been wonderful student reps this year, and I, I know we're gonna see you next year around, but we also just wish you the best on your next phase of your life and what you're gonna be doing, and we always, um, I think we have kids come back and we see you in the community, and it's always so rewarding for me when I see our past student reps out in the community doing awesome work. Thanks again.
Monique, anything to share tonight?
Yes. Bittersweet goodbye. It is really tough to see you guys go. You've been fantastic student reps and really appreciate your insight and the things that you've contributed and being able to make some of your, your, your school functions, um, seeing some of those things, so that's great. Wish you the best on the next chapter of your life. Have a safe and happy summer, and, uh, look forward to seeing you again. Maybe you and I will bump into each other. Um, and that's for everyone. Please have a safe and happy summer and looking forward to working with you all again, uh, come August. Thank you.
Nancy, anything to share tonight?
Um, just a couple of things. One is, uh, I did get an opportunity to participate in a half-day meeting on Saturday for the Oregon School Board Association and other special meetings. Um, as many of you know, there has been many, many things going on with the Oregon School Board Association, but we are making progress, and I'm, I'm happy to be a part of the forward thinking and the progress that is happening. Um, I had a fairly extensive report. Mark and I had a quick chat about that, and rather than go through that report here, I am gonna include it for the Board, um, so that we can discuss it perhaps at our retreat this summer, uh, but I wanted to make sure that you all knew, um, and were fully aware that the organization is beginning to thrive again. They have had a stumble, if you will, but we will survive, and it's, things are really turning around, and it's, it's good to see, and it's nice to be a part of that as well. So I just want to let you know that that OSBA report will be coming to you in writing, and then we'll be able to discuss it a little bit more in depth, uh, when we do our August retreat, so thank you, Chair Watson, for that. Uh, second of all, so thankful I was able to surprise RJ. Apparently, he had no idea why was that his school that night for honors night, and it was, uh, for real, so thank you so much for, for being everything that you guys are. I really do appreciate it. Um, it was fun to come to the schools. It was, I mean, all the activities, I mean, Monique said it, I mean, it's like the, the choirs and the, you get excited about it, because now that I see when, when the signs would come up about the plays, and I know I'm going to that, I'm going to this, or whatever the case is, because, because of you guys. So I just want to say thank you for that. Have a wonderful and safe summer. Remember, all the places you will go. Think about that. And if you need something to just laugh and smile at yourself, Google it. The book is online. Dr. Seuss.
That's right.
All the places you will go. So please remember to do that, and just very, very, very proud of you. Very proud of you. Um, and finally, thanks to my fellow Board members and Travis and everybody who allowed me to have the most awesome day that I could have ever imagined, to see my son graduate from Liberty, and, um, you guys really let me do the things, and then you kind of let me cry, or whatever it is I did, I have no clue what I did, uh, but thank you, thank you, thank you. That is just a tremendous honor and privilege to be a Board Member when you can see your kid come across the stage. It's something special, so, um, I'm admitting it, the decorations have not come down in the house. Uh, my husband's instructions are not to touch them until I, mommy, am done celebrating. So, that's all I.
Outstanding. Patrick, anything to share tonight?
Uh, as we finish up another school year, just to say, it's, uh, been a, my second year serving on the Board has been a real pleasure with all of you brilliant colleagues and, uh, our, on the Board and the professionals, and, uh, of course, our students. So, it's been a joy, looking forward to serving, uh, another year with all of you next year, uh, school year. And, uh, just in, in thinking about our students, I know your time on the Board is ending, but I always, uh, it's always so important to me to think that the beginnings are more important than the endings, and so it's the ending of your time here, sure, but it's the beginning of your time taking all these lessons to go and make wonderful, exciting changes in the world, and we really believe in you. This is just the beginning of your journey, so, uh, best of luck. If there's anything I can do, uh, feel free to ask anytime.
You have anything to share tonight?
Yeah, um, first, I wanted to, you know, it's bittersweet to see you guys go. It's been great, a great first-year experience for me, um, to experience all of this, and I hope nothing but the best for you on your new phase in life, and happy, I know you have one more year, but you're going to be the AFT president, so congratulations on that. I also wanted to take a moment to say thank you to, you know, Saideh and Ray and all the crew who, um, you know, worked overtime during the graduations, and that was a beautiful moment, and to my fellow directors who, you know, who got to participate in all of that. And wrapping up my first year, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to all of you and all of the knowledge and hard work and all your time that you've put into this district, and it's incredible to see how far it's come and it will continue to go. And, um, I just, I'm grateful, you know? When I first started, I was thankful, you know, those trepidations, because there was a, a world that I had not known, um, but you guys have welcomed me, and I appreciate it, and I will learn every day something each and each of you. So, thank you. And to Mark, uh, for being a good guide.
Thanks. Uh, yes, thank you, students, for being willing to serve with us. Um, I'm sure we'll see you in, we often end up in Hill High, so I'm sure we'll see you over there, and hopefully, we'll see you guys around the community at events and whatnot. Uh, you'd be surprised, the number of former student representatives I see at Tuesday Markets, when we're no longer encumbered on Tuesdays, so, um, you know, hopefully, we'll see you guys out there, and, yeah, I cannot be a stronger advocate for participation in the Fourth of July Parade. It is so good. Um, and, yeah, if you, if you have an opportunity to do it, I highly recommend it. Bring good walking shoes, because it is quite a walk. Um, and when, when, if you're, if you're lucky enough to get the little frisbees, that's right, make eye contact with somebody before you throw them a frisbee. Pencils are a little bit less, but, yeah, the frisbee, I've gotten to do it two years in a row, and I love it. Um, and yes, uh, graduations were amazing. Um, great to get an opportunity to participate in so many of those. Uh, the only one I missed, I got an opportunity to, uh, see, uh, Dr. Williams, and I would suggest if you ever get an opportunity to see Dr. Williams speak, the Director of the Oregon Department of Education, she's amazing. She came to our Black Country Celebration as well, um, which was great, because we got, th- this was more formal, and that was more, we got to know her. So that was, um, so I did thank her again for coming to Hillsborough, and she said, hey, we'll say hi to Travis. And so, yes, uh, it was great that she's made a warm spot in her heart for Hillsborough a little bit. Um, so, yes, if you ever get a chance to, to see her speak, I highly recommend it. She's kind of amazing, probably why she has that job. Um, and, uh, yes, I am very grateful to my colleagues for having this opportunity to serve in leadership capacity, uh, and thankful to our community for letting me serve in this capacity at all, and as we discussed upstairs, I mean, this is probably my final regular meeting as Board Chair. So, I guess I will, I will gavel this in probably in July, but that's, this could be a brief, so our next meeting is organizational meeting, um, where it's likely that Director Pantoja will switch into this seat. Um, look forward to your tenure as Board Chair. I think you can do a great job. Uh, and I will gavel this in at that meeting, and I'll try not to get too mushy.
Oh, it's gone.
Three years ago, I started using this, and, uh, when I was a kid, my dad was the head of a Masonic organization, and he used this gavel to conduct business during his time in that leadership role. When I was 17, he gave it to me when I was the head of that youth version of that organization, and it's been chewed on by dogs, and it has survived a fire, uh, but I'm proud to be able to use it for the last three years. With that, your turn.